Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the Rockdale Planning and Zoning Meeting of Tuesday, April fifteenth, without my glasses on even. Now, everybody take those words back. Could I have a roll call, please?
Chair Williams.
Fairly here.
Vice Chair Ratliff.
Here.
Commissioner Miles. Commissioner Willie. Commissioner Houston.
Here.
Commissioner Slubod.
Here.
And our new Commissioner Higdon.
Here.
And Council Liaison Starnes.
Here.
It's always hard to say.
So we do have a quorum. Let's go ahead and stand for the pledge of allegiance and the invocation, please.
I stand. I'm here amazingly, don't I? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go ahead, Ben, give us an invocation.
Okay, bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to come together again as a commission to review potential ordinance updates to the city. We pray that we follow the direction of your will and your will only. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Do we have any citizens' communications?
No.
If not, then we're ready for action item number one. Consider and take any necessary action on a recommendation to the city council regarding a potential amendment to section fourteen point zero two point one two three, sign requirements.
Okay, so this is a continuation of the last workshop. So I'll briefly go over what we talked about last time. If you had a chance to review and have any questions, we can go over them before we continue on. So the big keys is we're potentially taking out pole signs as allowed use. We define them as freestanding single tenant or multi-tenant signs, and we're proposing to instead only allow either monument signs or monolith signs. And these are some examples of those. And then we get into the multi-tenant world where we would allow for a multi-tenant monument sign if they choose. That is the only type of multi-tenant sign. I don't know if y'all have had a chance if that is fine with the commission. And then this is gonna be a one-off just in case you start getting new developments. Some allow retaining wall signs. I didn't see an issue with adding that in just in case we get a request like that, that they would be allowed. And then of course they have their secrets.
That's a question. Hang on just a second. Anybody have any questions or disagreements with what he's suggesting?
Does the commission?
You're, we're at multi-tenant.
Yeah, I mean, does the commission, I guess a good question would be, are y'all okay with removing pole signs? I know that some council li- like us too. I know some others may not. And so that is up for debate if, if you think that we shouldn't allow for pole signs anymore. Or if we should add that back in, because currently in this ordinance, we have it removed.
Uh, my, my question, well, yeah, we're not gonna remove the pole signs. We're gonna have a grace period or?
They're, they're removed. I mean, existing as grandfathered in, and we're not gonna have those removed. But a new business couldn't come back in and install a, a pole sign. They'd have to install either what we're proposing, a monument sign, a monolith sign, or a retaining wall sign.
I know you have so much leisure time in your schedule. Do, do we have, have we identified pole signs in Rockdale? Would we have an inventory of those that we would, if, if the property sold, could we tell them, by the way, you have a pole sign that's not?
Well, um, no. I don't have an inventory of that. I mean, you could make one. It wouldn't take that long to make one, because there's, uh, I don't wanna say there's not that many. They're typically only along your highway corridor of seventy-nine usually.
So isn't, I mean, we're not gonna get into any fuzzy area there with this change?
No.
If it's grandfathered in, it, that goes away if you sell your property.
No, grandfather uses don't go away on sale of property use.
That's what I thought.
Um, the way it would work is if they were going to repair the sign, then if it's no longer allowed, then you typically don't allow the repair. You would say that you'd need to install a new sign. That would meet standard. It, that could, and tha- and that's why I'm bringing it up. Because there are a lot of pole signs existing, and so we can put it back in if you want. I just, we do receive some direction from council to remove it, so we potentially remove it.
Repair is not the same as name change and everything like that. We're good with what name change on a pole sign if it's there, exist.
Yeah, I mean, if they're changing out the sign face, that requires a permit currently. So if you remove pole signs from that allowed, um, sign type, then staff could not issue a permit to put a new sign face up. So they would essentially have to go with a new type of signage if they wanna put their name. Or they can choose to do wall signs instead. They can just keep the pole sign there and have that previous face removed and then put a wall sign. And so that's, that's where we get into that.
Any other questions on poles? Okay.
What is the biggest issue that we're having with pole signs?
I don't see an issue with pole signs. Um, it was more of just a direction from certain council members. And so we've just proposed to remove it. There's not, some people believe they're not that aesthetic, to be quite honest with you. I personally don't have a problem with them. And we can add them in there if we want, or we can keep them removed. That's kinda why I'm asking the question, because we already have so many. We can just take a stance now and say we're not gonna do anymore, or we can just acknowledge that and keep allowing it. I would say most of the ordinances that I did look at do allow pole signs. There are a few that don't.
The, the recommendation from city council is to do away with pole signs or is just, just from a couple?
We didn't receive an official recommendation. It was some city council members when a, we had a request from Dollar Tree for variance. They wanted to do a pole sign. Council would have liked to see a monument sign instead. And the same happened with Autozone coming in. Instead of doing a pole sign, they'd like to see a monument sign. So with those two directions, it seems that they don't want pole signs anymore, so we proposed it.
Aesthetically, in the normal range of things, they're not as attractive as the monument style.
Right.
They can be, they can be alright. I'm not saying that, but I'm saying that I, we were kinda directed to look at more than just what we currently ha- have.
And I, I, so I disagree with that. I think they're more aesthetically pleasing than, than monuments on. So I'm not, that's why I'm trying to figure out exactly what direction, you know, we're trying to go with this, because I'm not aware of what council has advised you in, in, in regards to getting rid of pole signs. Well, let's?
I was gonna ask you something.
On the last two sign ordinances that came, or sign variances that came to council, since I've been here, um, in both cases, council approved them. They were requesting a pole sign in their variance and coun- council approved, uh, the second off-site sign or off, uh, a second sign as long as it was aligned with the sign.
Yeah.
In your experience in other cities, how does that play out?
You know what? There's some cities, um, that have gone away from pole signs. Most of them are really pushed, have, have pretty much eliminated off-premise pole signs, like billboards. Um, but then there are some that have said, no, we don't want, pole signs because of landscape clutter is what it is, the terminology is. But it just, I mean, they're, they're from a marketing standpoint. Pole sign is gonna be visible. That's the reason why businesses want them and, and it helps business from that standpoint. And so, but. It is, it is entirely from city to city, it just varies what is, what's important to the city.
Yeah.
So the question I was gonna ask anyway, but, but you've, you've led me to it. If we eliminate pole signs, company has a, buys a business, there's a pole sign on the, on the premises. He needs a permit to ma- and he needs a permit to put the new name up, and we say, no, there, you know, that's not permitted. You have to put a monument sign. The question then, what really becomes to the pole? Because there are a number of poles, signs running through the neighborhood that have old.
Messages.
You know, you know, messages. I, I, well, the example is the, what's now the new, um, convenience store restaurant that used to be Squirts, that used to be Sonny's. You know, I mean, there's a sign that it, you know, that ATM and other, you know, services, you know, so, and, and blanks. And I, I guess I would say that that's a worse look than having a, a maintained pole sign allowed. So the question would be, I guess, is if we don't want pole signs, we gotta be a little bit more aggressive about what does a business do with a nonusable pole sign? And I guess for the signs also, what can we be a little bit more aggressive about? Old and nonexistent signs, for instance. I don't know how long it's been since Sonny's has been in existence, but there's still a sign over the, over the gas pumps, you know, saying, you know, saying that. I mean, it was there when Squirts, I mean, that sort of thing, I think is, is more detrimental to the, to the look of the, uh, of our commercial area than specifically pole signs.
I think that the ordinance can be written that would allow existing pole signs to be maintained, you know, if the property is sold, a new business come in to put a new face, you know, or a new sign. If the ri- oh, if the ordinance is written that way, to allow that. But, you know, the, the fact is, if you all want to say, you know, pole signs are fine, that's, that's as well. I mean, we're, we, we're only making assumption that the council has not voted to say, hey, we don't want pole signs.
Yeah, and the, and the council can go either way anyway, right?
They've just kind of moved in that direction with some of their recent actions.
Well, Ben, you mentioned, I'm sorry.
Well, I, I, before, let me read this off, because I was actually incorrect. It, the way that the ordinance currently reads is actually they could reface that sign, so they can keep their pole signs. The other, answering Bob's question, we actually have something in there that when a business is no longer there, they have sixty days to remove the sign, so we just need to start enforcing it. It's already in the ordinance. I didn't change that.
Uh, well, that was my question, because redoing the face of the pole sign?
It, the way that this reads?
Not exactly a repair, it's an upgrade. It makes it look nicer.
Yeah, the way that that read, um, it's, it's deep down, it's almost like on the last page of your ordinances, it's on non-conforming signs. The way it reads is it's still considered a non-conforming sign, but that they could repair it like it is a legal sign.
So you would consider that a repair?
Yeah, that's a, is a repair slash replacement. So you have, in, in permitting world, you have a new build or new construction, and then you have repairs slash replacements. And so if the sign's already there and you repair or replace the sign face only and not the whole pole structure, that is a replacement.
So that would not be excluded, or that is ex- so, like, the face of a sign doesn't last forever. You have to take it down and replace it. So would that be at a point where you have to get an okay to do that, or that's not?
Currently, a permit's required. A permit is required if you're gonna do a sign refacing, yes. And then?
And it, I mean, it's not, you know, you're refacing it, there's not a question of whether or not it would be approved or not, correct?
Right, it's, it's more of just the preliminary process of pulling the permit. Yeah. Because some people will actually add electrical after the fact, and so there's, there's that. But if you're just gonna reface it, it still does require a permit currently. And so they would come in. There's not much to review, as like Tim said.
It's not considered a repair that you have to then take that whole sign down and do a monument sign?
Right, well, this, like I said, I was incorrect on that part.
Okay.
The way that it reads now is it's still considered non-conforming. So a business that have a non-conforming sign, but it would be treated as it's legal if they're just gonna do the replacement. Now, they cannot expand it, though. Keep that in mind. That is different. But they would be able to keep it as is.
Would this ordinance exclude electronic signs that are already in place if they sell, like, they, for instance, rainbow courts, their sign? You know, it's electronic.
Yeah.
If, if they sell that place and the new owners come in, are they gonna have to redo that or do away with that pole sign?
Electronic signs are gonna be a little bit different, because we actually will get into that section. I don't think we talked about it last time, that we, we're gonna start specifying, um, how often the images can change and that the lights can't blink and things like that. So it would be still an existing sign. It would be the non-conforming sign that would just be brought into conformance. I don't, I don't recall if your guys' messages change or not, but that's something that we're proposing. Is, it's not a slideshow. I know the chambers does. The chambers, if you go by, they, they have a slideshow that you're reading, which is, you don't want traffic to be doing. You actually want traffic to be looking at the road when they're driving. So that is the goal of that. But we will get into that. But that would be the answer to that, is there's actually gonna be a section that we'll talk about. What does?
I didn't mean to derail the whole workshop. I just had some questions.
No, those are good questions. I mean, that's why we're talking about this, because we can go any which way. Um, I really wanted to talk about the pole signs, because that is gonna be a big change for this community.
Well, is there, is there an area where we say at the, we prefer monument ti- signs? Is it, do we get in legal trouble if, if we do a preference? But then allow these other signs, or is it best just to be solid?
You, uh, I, I'll use the example of how I've done these tables. I mean, so you're gonna list out specifically what signs you're gonna allow in your community?
Right.
And then if you recall the tables that we talked about last time, we give some leniency of where you can make your sign a little bit bigger if you set it back farther.
Right.
You can do that. That's perfectly fine. Uh, but you won't necessarily specify in your ordinance outright by saying, you can do a pole sign, but please do a monument sign instead. You wouldn't necessarily do that. You would either say you're not gonna allow pole signs, or you're gonna allow them, and then you're gonna set whatever those parameters are that you'd like to see.
So, how's this gonna be presented? Are they gonna do a workshop and read like we're doing now for this, or is it just gonna be on a general?
As an ordinance, it requires two readings and a public hearing.
Yeah, I mean.
I would anticipate them having a separate workshop necessarily just to talk about signs.
Because this is comprehensive.
It is.
And that's why it's presented for you to really get into the detail and, you know, the fact is they can take, they can take ten minutes, they can take a half an hour, or they can set a special work, they can have it on the agenda and say, hey, we wanna have a workshop on this.
So if I'm understanding correctly, if you, so say about every five years, you need to replace the face of a pole sign. So you're saying, even if it's the same, you need to get a permit to do that?
You've always had to get a permit to replace your sign facing.
That's kinda what got us into this right now.
Yeah.
Is it?
And so what, I guess I was incorrect earlier. And so it actually, the way it's currently written, which I believe it sounds like the commission wants to keep that, is that they would keep allowing that pole sign to exist as is, no expansion of square footage by any means. But they could replace the sign face, or if the business sells, the new business can put their name on the pole sign that used to be there.
Joan, I, you didn't probably, I don't remember you at the city council meetings, but the new business coming to town already had a pole sign as in a highway sign. And you, you know, so they couldn't put a, they asked permission to put freestanding pole sign. And that caused a conflict because of the, uh, what do you call a highway sign?
It's a detached, it's a detached sign. The billboard is, the way we regulate billboards, which has not changed, I, I mean, I guess it's changed because we removed pole signs. But a lot of cities will do it by square footage. Billboards are notoriously have a lot of square footage, because they're, they want to be the biggest sign on your highway. They'll rent that space. So cities have gone to a square footage requirement where it's smaller, so you won't get any billboards anymore. You can't, you don't outright say that you're not allowing billboards, but that's how they tackle that typically. And then the other way they tackle that is what we currently have is you cannot have, uh, off-premise signage. So you can't buy a vacant lot and go put up a sign to advertise your restaurant or whatever business you're running. It would have to be on the location that you actually operate. And that one is a common one.
I flipped the pages so many times. Where are you at?
Well, I, I'm, I'm really not on any page right now. I'll tell you where we stopped at the last workshop. We got through all the detached signs. That's what we're talking about right now. We will get into the attached when the commission feels ready for that. But we're talking about detached that's off the building. Of, currently, we're just proposing monument, monolith, and multi-tenant monument.
That was your question when, when we?
And my question is, is that, is the commission wanna present that to council in that form of how you currently see it, or do we wanna add any other type of signage as in keep allowing pole signs?
I do have one question with the pole signs. Um, my main thought is price point and maintenance cost over time with a, a pole sign versus the monolith or the monument. Um, I, I kinda agree with Mr. Starnes with, I mean, I think it can look good if it's a pole sign, doesn't, like, just because it's a pole sign doesn't mean it's, has to look bad. Um, and, and so I think upkeep over time is gonna be a consideration, um, one versus the other, and then the initial investment. So we'd rather things be upkept, and so I, I wouldn't really wanna move forward on getting rid of pole signs if we don't really think that people are gonna be able to actually upkeep the monument signs or even make that initial investment. So I'd be interested to see the numbers on the different price points there.
Yeah, I, I do not know what it would cost upkeep signs. What I will tell you, um, at least from my perspective as a staff member, you unfortunately always are gonna look at it as, what's the worst-case scenario of what you specify, what is, what can they get away with the most when they do a certain action? So in this case, sign upkeeping. How little money can I put into the sign to meet city code to make the most money for my business? You know, you're gonna have different property owners that are gonna take care of their property, and they're gonna want the nice-looking sign and, and put more money into it. But you're also gonna have to look at it from a pole sign perspective. If you allow them just to put up a pole and a sign on top of it with no design at all, they're gonna do that, if you allow that.
Is it possible to add pole signs in the, we just went this whole thing wi- with the, um, storage units, you know, I can't remember, I, the, well, Furbage last week.
The conditional use permits?
Conditionally, it, would it be possible to put pole signs as conditional use and let the city council deal with, decide whether or not it's an appropriate use of a pole versus, you know, well?
And with minimum upkeep requirements or something?
You could do that. I, I've, I've never seen that in my professional career. That would be a new one for me.
Generally, when you, when you create the zoning ordinance, you want to create the zoning ordinance to, to fit and allow what to go through about, what would happen about ninety percent of the time. If you can use that ninety percent rule and say that ninety percent of the time, council's gonna rule it in this way, or my commission's gonna recommend it this way, then that's what you set the ordinance to address. And then, um, there's ten percent what is what you would have, the variances or the conditional use or?
And, and I will stipulate off of his point. There is variance requests. They always have their right to, to go for a variance, so that is something. So if you don't stipulate a type of signage that we're not talking about today, that somebody comes in with and they're really convinced that they wanna do that type of signage, they can go ask council for a variance for it.
Well.
I'm kinda hung up on.
You, you know that I reached out to council in public meeting and said, hey, guys, call me. I need to have some directions. And I never got a phone call, and I didn't think it was appropriate for me to call and ask. So I, I don't have a real feel from what direction they were really wanting to go. And I'm thinking we're at a crossroads here where we can leave it as, as we're, as it is, pursuing it like that, or we can specifically put in their questions regarding the pole, or we can just have one of those little things that you add on to it saying council was, I mean, you know, commission was worried about pole signs and let council hash it out. So I, I don't know if that's just the three options or if there's another option.
I, I would prefer that we hash down on what the commission wants, because that, you're just the advisory board for the council, so that, they're gonna want something in stone of what the commission feels is best, and then they can make their changes after that. And so I would like if we would get at least ninety-eight percent of the work done for them. And then I could just put in the memo of, you know, commission ruled that they want pole signs, but there was a lot of discussion on it if you would like to review that section. I mean, I could put something like that in the memo. But I would like to give them a complete ordinance to look at for their approval, so that way they don't have to spend as much time, since that is the point of this board, is we're facing the burn of their work for them, since they have a lot of other items.
Hung up on the replacement part. I mean, if it needs to be replaced, because it looks dingy or whatever, don't we want that to happen? I mean, why do we, if it's gonna be the same sign, the same lettering, colors, whatever, why does, why does a permit have to be received?
You know, I understand the permits for the electrical portions of signs, because state law requires a sign company to have their own sign electrician that they hire out to install that portion.
The electricity's already there. I'm just talking about the plastic.
I know, I'm, 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 I'm getting to that portion. The sign reface could be something that I can look at from other cities. Since I've started here, it's always been a requirement. But to be quite honest with you, we require permits for fencing that the building code says does not require a permit. And so, uh, other cities require fencing permits, some don't. I'm sure there are gonna be some cities that require sign face replacement permits and some that don't. And so that's something that the commission is, finds a concern. We can look at that at another time. That's not addressed in this ordinance.
Yeah, listen.
But, but as far as them replacing existing pole signs, they can't. I was, I was misspoken earlier, so they, they would have that avenue, currently how it's written.
So what he's requesting of us by motion or by vote is feelings on pole signs. Anybody wanna take the lead on this?
Yeah, I, you don't have to take a vote, because we have a lot to keep going on this. It's more of just the direction. Before we move to attached, I just wanna make sure we're at a good point with detached signs, so that way, at the next meeting, I can give you a finalized ordinance that we can pass on to council, because I would like council to be looking at this in May.
So any other questions regarding pole signs? Any other questions? Let's move on.
Okay.
So are we putting poles, approving pole signs, or, or is that coming up?
His suggestion was we attack it at another meeting, another workshop.
No.
No.
No. My suggestion is we keep workshopping this, and so I need your direction. You don't have to take votes on anything right now, because this is a workshop.
No, I just was.
But I, I would like to know as staff, do I need to add them back in, or do we just wanna leave them out and let council make that final determination?
I don't see a problem with pole signs. You know.
Say that again?
I don't have a problem with pole signs, you know.
I mean, if McDonald's moves in to the other end of town, I mean, everybody knows the golden arches. Are we gonna tell them, hey, sorry about those luck, but y'all can have?
Some cities do that.
I, yeah, I, I will say that they do have monuments, yeah.
I don't see a problem with pole signs.
Or Whataburger.
Yeah, Whataburger is the same.
I was in San Antonio.
Restrictions on them.
I was in San Antonio, and if you knew the logo of the company, it wasn't Chick-fil-A, but it was something like that. It was actually on the building. It meant nothing.
Right.
It meant nothing to me, because I didn't know that they had changed their logo and all that. So I was looking at that, and finally, about two miles down the road, oh, that was, you know, anyway, so.
Okay, but it sounds like the commission?
No problem.
I guess I am less pro pole than majority. I guess I would be comfortable not, not having new poles come in.
New poles?
Yeah.
This is what this whole discussion's about, is the new poles.
And not repl- not completely replacing a, an old pole. As long as the pole is kept in good repair and up, it's okay. I, by the way, but I'm, but I guess I'd prefer to see more, more lower, so I prefer the monument, monument-type signage around. Personal preference.
Joan?
I could go either way. Um, I don't have a problem with pole signs, but I have a pole sign. Uh, but I think that I've been in communities where certain areas require only, are that there not be pole signs. And the monument signs look really good. I'm worried that we're gonna get in the same thing that we did with parking on grass, to be honest, that, uh, there's gonna be pe- businesses that say, why? Pole signs are not inexpensive, but neither is a monument sign. So, I mean, it's.
I will give you some reassurance that this is not gonna affect existing businesses. Unless they tear that pole down and they wanna put it back, then yes, it will affect them. But as far as repairing.
I just.
Parking on grass is a whole nother thing, because that affects current residents.
I was using, yeah, loosely using.
The two new businesses recently, Dollar General and Autozone, you know, were proposing or requesting the pole sign. requesting the pole sign. And council said, no, but you can do a monument sign as a as a second sign or whatever, or with the lighting.
Yeah, it one one was the Dollar General was a brightness variance and council granted it on the fact that they would do a monument instead of a pole. And then Autozone had a billboard on their property that they didn't own, but acted as their detached. And so to get a variance for a second detached, council said, if you do a monument, we'll let you have another detached.
My concern is real estate. A lot of our lots are fairly small, and they do their homework before they purchase. And do we have the real estate available for monument signs and what have you? But other than that, I I don't have a, this muddies the pot because now you're even split. I don't, my my suggestion is to make a note of it that we struggled with it. And then let council be aware of it and see which what they want to do.
We did that on something else recently, oh, with the parking.
Yeah, the parking for the, um, San Gabriel, and they hashed it out. So I'll just add it in my memo.
Hang on. What is your suggestion?
Oh, and what we what we presented to council was that you approved it, you had a concern about the parking. You didn't say no to the parking, you didn't say yes to the parking, you had a concern about the parking. So council made the decision that was one and a half.
Yes, one and a half. Yeah. So we can just, I can just, when I present it to them, we'll leave it as is. And then I will make the remark that they had concerns on allowing pole signs or not. And then council can have that discussion.
You're happy.
If the planning commission is happy, I'm happy.
We're in a heck of a tennis match right here, boys. I I I I'm okay with that. I mean.
Okay, it it we can move forward then. So let's talk about attached signs. I just wanted to make sure we're on the same page with that. So attached signs, um, one of the things that we've specified that we didn't previously specify is that the sign has to be attached to the building where the services are being provided. So we're not going to allow them to be attached to an accessory structure that would be sitting on the property, maybe as like a storage or something that actually have to be on that business wall. Uh, now we'll get into the different types of of, uh, signage here. Oh, let me point out one more thing before I move on. Um, there were some variance requests over the past couple of years that went to council about we currently don't allow wall signs to be above the roof line at all. And we had two variances that were approved that allowed that. So we've proposed to only allow them to be two foot over the roof line now, so they would have a little bit of leeway. I just wanted to point that out as a commission if they had any concerns about that because that is a change from what we previously allow.
You understand what you're talking about where the wall sign.
Yeah, I do, but. Me talking is, we go through a per, we are supposed to go through a permitting, and if they know that it's not supposed to go, then.
So if we'll use this example, we'll just say that's the roof line. Currently, the sign's got to be equal to or below. What we're proposing is just a small two foot above it is the is the difference.
And I'm good with it, but I mean, whatever.
It's more just reflect how council's been voting. We can keep it as is. It's just when you get a couple variance requests that come in that get approved, it tells you that you really need to update your your code to reflect that.
Did you look at other cities to see what?
Yeah, they there's several. Some went as far as three feet. I thought that was a little high. So I went with two feet, which was what another community used that I felt comfortable with. But we can, that's up for discussion if you think two feet's not enough or if two feet's too much.
What's Kathy's corner? What is it? No, three feet?
I do not know. I'd have to pull, they should have pulled a permit.
Oh, yeah, I can see with a flat roof where you might have a real.
And it's above the peak of the roof, right?
Yeah, but if it's a flat roof.
It's above the roof line, so not not the peak.
Oh, two feet above the roof.
The roof line, yeah. Yeah, because, uh, we had a variance request from Fred's Nail Shop on seventy-seven that they have a very steep roof. And so it wasn't above the peak, but their roof line is really low on the building. And so that is the ordinance. It says roof line, it does not say peak. And so that's how staff would review that.
Still, variances are possible.
That's right.
Assuming, but but the, I I always have a council meeting where the convenience store had put theirs in. I know that there were other issues. Do we know about how high above the roof line that particular sign is?
I asked them to measure that, and they were saying it's about a foot. I believe it was closer to two foot, to be quite honest with you.
Okay, so but that, but but, but if we're talking about two feet, that that sign would probably have then passed.
That's right. And so I've tried to change it to, um, reflect that recent change. I don't want to allow it too far above, uh, because you don't, I don't like doing businesses out there, but the China buffet has one above the peak. That's something that you don't want to see. And so theirs is probably four foot above.
Yeah. I think two feet is a pretty reasonable.
Okay. Uh, next we'll get into awning signs. Uh, awning signs can be different examples. They can either project a little bit above the awning as you see here, or they can actually be, um, this is also considered signage if you had something that's advertising here along your awning.
Hang on just a second. Roof slope and and the roof level.
Roof line?
Roof, this starts either out or on against the building or whatever. The other way, how do you measure two feet was where I was trying to get at?
On the on the last, on the wall signs?
Yeah.
It would be at the roof line. So, um, like, I don't have anything to draw it on. But if you have, so you know, you have the peak of the roof, right, and it'll slope down, and then it creates a triangle almost, and then you have your wall. The base of that roof is your roof line, and then it will get to the roof pitch, and then you'll be at the top, which is considered your apex. So at that roof line, you that's, it acts as your ground almost. If you were to measure something from the ground, and then you'll measure it upwards to two foot. That's how you get your measurement.
Well, my question kind of would be vertical from the facade, or does it account for the slope?
It's a, it's above. It's above that roof line. So that roof line is a base measurement of zero.
So if this were actually a roof, this would be the roof line, this would be the peak.
Mm-hmm. Right.
And so you would measure two feet above here.
That's right. It'd be that line. So it doesn't equate to the slope. It would be the top of that sign cannot be two foot above.
But I was, point of measurement is more what I was.
Yeah.
Where do you put the tape measure? You go straight up?
At the roof line. That's what your ordinance specifies. So you you would start it at that top of that roof line?
Measure straight up.
And you go up.
Got it. Everybody else clear? Sorry for being a slow learner in the group.
Well, we need to have this hashed out, so that's perfectly fine. So this is a new, we don't specify, um, awning signs currently, so I've proposed to allow it. The difference is we would only allow an awning sign to project one foot above the awning that is affixed to it.
For the sake of conversation, the awning is the blue.
Yes.
Material that has a white lettering in it.
So the awning is.
Considered awning.
That's right. And so this could not project one foot above the top of the awning. So this one would actually be taken at the peak of that at that awning. It wouldn't be at that base level. Again, that's another example.
If Margaritaville's coming, I say bring it on.
These are different type of examples of what you'll see if you allow for awning signings. Some actually just put it on the awning, and they do not go above. We'll get into neon signs in a second. But that is, that's what staff's proposing. It's, it's a new item, but it's something that your community's seen before.
Have they made any change? Has TechStop made any changes regarding awning signs and along their corridor?
To my understanding, they don't allow signage to extend into their right of way. So under, uh, like a sidewalk, you couldn't put an awning and put signage above it.
Sidewalk or anything like that because it's only so far from the front of the building, right?
Yeah, like I know we have one area that has a sign that's above the sidewalk that would be, it's a non-conforming sign. That TechStop wouldn't allow anymore. That would be projecting off of the building.
And.
Um, next we'll get into the neon signs. So this is also a new item. Um, one thing that I do want to say that we've proposed, and I need your guys' feedback on, is we've asked them not to be pulsing flashing or create any type of movement when they have that neon sign. So that would mean, uh, open signs are considered neon signs. So we would ask them not to be blinking open. It would just be on that it's open. That's something to keep in mind. I don't know how y'all would feel about that.
I get that.
That the goal of your sign section is to prevent distraction for drivers is your ultimate. And then after that, it would be safety of your citizens that are walking around the signage. If there are no questions on that, we go into window signage.
And so are y'all with him on pages?
No, I don't think, yeah, I am now.
Okay. Uh, on the window signage, we've requested that, um, that they don't exceed twenty-five percent of all of the window area. And then we also additionally specify that, uh, no single window. So if you'll see here, we say no more than twenty-five percent of the hole. And then we also specify for a single window pane, no more than fifty percent can be covered with the sign.
So that sign wouldn't be allowed.
This sign would actually be illegal. Yeah, it's it's covering way too much.
Now, is there, we're not going to differentiate between obscured and partially. So some of those are actually a film that has holes.
Right. We, we're not going to differentiate between the two.
Okay.
I would recommend not doing that because at the end of the day, it's going to be a window sign. And so I would recommend, um, not including that gray area.
Yeah.
Okay. After that, we got more of a lengthy section. If there's no questions with those types of signs, those are pretty, um, simple ones.
Any questions regarding section? Carry on.
We'll get into electronic signs. So as as Mr. Houston was speaking of, we currently don't regulate them. And so I propose that we start regulating them again as the concern is to not cause traffic.
Guys here, hang on. For the new guys here, if it's red, this is a brand new proposal.
Yeah.
If it's black, it's there. And if it's black and lined out, it's.
It was there, and I'm taking it out. Yeah. Yeah. And so on electronic signs, there's a couple of things that we want to talk about. Uh, on section B, we've told them that if you have a malfunction on your screen, that you need to turn it off until it's fixed. On section C, we get into the brightness standard of electronic signs. So if you remember at the last meeting, we were talking about sign illumination that was measured by foot candles. Well, we're going to use a different measurement for electronic signs. They're actually measured in what's called knit units. And so what we specify is that the maximum brightness shall not exceed seven thousand nits during daylight, when it's brighter outside. And then when it gets dark, it shall not exceed a thousand nits at night.
From a code enforcement standpoint, is there a device that measures nits portable?
There is a device for it. You also, when someone, um, comes in with a new electronic sign, they give you the plans for that. And it'll actually be, it's it's a programming setting that they'll show you within those plans, that they will have it where it's in the day. They'll tell you what that knit ratio is going to be. And then at night, it will automatically transition into that more dim.
Standard that's measurable and enforceable.
That's right. It's measurable. They'll have to, and if they lie to you, or if it malfunctions and it's brighter, you can actually take a device out there and go measure that yourself and then.
Excellent.
Follow forward with that. Um, another area is that we've asked that if a sign is within a hundred feet of any residential property, that it has to be oriented in a way that it's not facing that residential property. Uh, we also specify that if it is visible from a residentially zoned property, that the sign brightness is going to have to actually go down to two hundred and fifty nits at night instead of the thousand that we would allow. And so again, it for that to be enforceable, you would be going to the property line at a residentially zoned property and looking out and seeing if you can see that or not. And then if you can, you would take that measuring device and and make that measurement. And then here's a section that I referenced before. Uh, prior to issue a permit, the applicant must provide a written certification that the sign manufacturer, that the light intensity has been factory preset to not exceed the levels above. So you'd get that proof from them. Any questions on that portion? That was a lot of information.
So Bud, no more wiring up two hundred and thirty volts to a hundred volt light now.
Okay, so that's the general regulations. So I want to get into what we would allow currently, since we're, I haven't added the pole signs in, we'll make this note to council so they can do this for electronic signs if they want to as well. We're only going to allow electronic monument message sign, which is what's on this screen. That's typically what they're going to look like. Some of the highlights of it are, um, that the maximum size shall only be twenty square foot per side of that electronic sign. The messaging standard is just going to be like just the other ones, that it must only display a message that is static or fixed. And then if it's going to be a static or fixed image, it must be displayed for at least eight seconds before rotating to the next message. And then we specify after that that it can't scroll or bring blink or have any other form of movement in the text. Again, the idea behind that is just to prevent the distraction from traffic that's passing by.
So Ben, given this sign, so there's two sets of messages. So the the message, uh, you know, senior Sunday, that can change every eight seconds, and then stays the the next message. So in words, you can change the message, but it has to be be solid, and it can't, it has to remain there for at least eight seconds.
That's right.
Okay.
It had to remain there for eight seconds. It had to be a standstill image, not be blinking in any type of way. And then when it changes, it will just transition. It won't scroll up and change. It will just transition to the next message. And then that message is going to stay there for eight seconds until they, and they'll just keep cycling through however many messages they have that they want to display. Chambers is a great example. They have a lot of messages that they want to display. So instead of scrolling through, they'll just present that message on one image, and then it'll just transition to another one and stay for eight seconds, and then transition to another one. Um, the other thing we specified, we we talked about construction and installation standards. We just say that the electronic monument message sign is required to be installed with the structural body of a monument sign. And it may not be in addition to an already existing sign as an attachment. Uh, such signs shall not project outward or upward from the main body of the sign. So kind of like this sign, it's it's within that construction of the monument sign, right in the middle of it.
So I can give them a question. So if the if the electronic was where Cedar Brook is now, that would not be allowed?
That's right.
Okay.
It cannot project above it. So it will have to be within that. So if you imagine monument signs are typically going to be some sort of rectangular shape, it cannot be above the top of that rectangular shape. It's going to have to be within that is what we're proposing. And then the other item is we've just specified that the all electronic wiring needs to be concealed within the body of the monument, or it shall not be , um, visible from the exterior. Any questions on electronic signage? That's the only one that we're proposing to be allowed is electronic monument signs.
Our electrical code specifies the PVC pipe or or whatever that is.
Yeah, I mean, we have the International Code Council codes adopted. And so it specifies construction standards for all trade work signage, building, existing building, historical buildings, all of the above.
Questions?
What were the dimensions on that?
So on that, for the electronic sign, we would allow that to be no greater than twenty square foot. And that's only the electronic portion. The rest of it, we can add a note, we we should add a note just to make it clear that they would be subject to the monument sign section that specified earlier of the other dimensions. But what this code is saying that within those dimensions that you're allowed, you can have twenty square foot max. you can have twenty square foot max where it would actually be an electronic portion of that sign.
Did you get to read the first part of the, the first workshop we did or? So on that sign there, we have standards where you have to have so much veneer.
Right. Yeah, I'll go to it real quick.
Yeah, no, I get that. I'm, I'm just, the restrictions we're putting on some of these signs, I mean, I don't know about you guys, but it's like, it's hard enough to start your own business and to build on top of that. And everything seems like we're narrowing it down. We're trying to cut back on pole signs and then we're limiting our message. And if anybody building a business, it's about getting your message out there. You know, we're putting, it's just a lot of restrictions.
Can you tell me again, explain the twenty-two square feet?
The twenty square foot? So the way that it's gonna work is you have the monument sign as a whole. And so you have a section that specifies that. I need to go in here and cross-reference that. That would give you your maximum square footage. And then within that maximum that you have, what this section of the code is saying is that this portion here, that's the electrical portion, is allowed to be twenty square foot at max.
So that's just for the monument signs?
Yeah, cuz we only, we're only gonna allow electronic messaging signs on monument signs is how it currently reads. And so you, so you could not put in electronic.
Right, four by five, two by ten.
Yeah, you could not put an electronic sign on a monolith signs currently. I've never seen one. I'd have to look if that's even a thing. I don't think that is, but.
And it is not a proportional thing where we said the signs could be larger if they were farther off the.
I, from a professional standpoint, what I'll get into about electronic signs is that's gonna be your most distracting type of sign. And so that's gonna be the one. If you're gonna limit any type of signage, I would recommend that you'd limit electronic signage. Because the quickest thing to grab a driver's attention away from the road is if you turn on a light to their side. You're gonna look over there. A pole sign's not gonna do that. You know, they may look as they're driving up the road, they'll see the pole sign, but you're gonna quickly turn if something changes to your vicinity. Yeah, that's the idea. So if you make a, if you make a smaller screen, you know that that's gonna pull their attention. So they're looking at this smaller box and their eyes aren't moving to read it. It's just a quick McDonald's sign. Okay, and then I'm back on the road. If you allow it to be a big message sign, then they're looking this way for longer as they're driving cuz they're not gonna slow down most likely. It's kind of that idea. You know, and like, you know, maybe you're a, a really good driver and you pull over the side of the road and you investigate and park. I don't know. I know I wouldn't. I would, I would be looking to the side. And so that's kinda the idea.
Yeah, from defensive driving, it was, um, motion, light, dark. And certain colors. That's, that's your.
And that's why you get into the brightness as well when we're talking about the nits that we allow and it, why it's significantly less at night is cuz you don't wanna blind the driver when your message change. Because some messages are gonna naturally be brighter than others cuz they're gonna use brighter colors than the other one did. And so you just, you want it to remain consistent. That's the idea. We can allow it to be a bigger square footage if we would like to. Twenty is relatively small, but that was the idea behind it is to, if they're gonna look, it's gonna be a quick message cuz you're not gonna fit that big of a message on a twenty square foot screen. Unless you write really small print that doesn't get your message out there.
We'll let, uh, council.
Is this what other cities do? This is the four by five?
Yeah, the one that I referenced, it may have been Marble Falls that had a really good sign code. Whichever one had a really good sign code, um, that, that we used did have the twenty foot. Other ones, a lot of them are relatively silent on electronic signs. Like we're currently silent on electronic signs.
I just know when we got our sign, there's a lot that, uh, that you have to calculate it in as far as speed limit, how many cars, how many lanes. There's a lot to that, to calculating what size you actually need. So it is visible. Of course, that's a pole sign, not a monument sign, but.
Bring those standards. Bring those standards with you at the next workshop and we'll see if you wanna.
Well, and you can also, um, we can do the same thing on these where you give them an incentive to set the sign back a little bit farther, to allow for a bigger electronic face that we've done for other monument signs. Or you can just say that you want it bigger. I would just say from a professional standpoint, you just gotta keep in mind, people are gonna look to the side and the bigger you make that message screen, the longer they're gonna be reading that sign. That's just something that we need to keep in mind.
liability in case you.
Just a little concerned about that. It's different on the highway than it is on a major highway like seventy-nine, let's say.
Yeah. And you know, I, I will also say, you have, when we get bogged down on some of these things that they're smaller than others, um, this goes back to the conversation that Doug mentioned earlier. Where you're not gonna outright say that you want somebody to go a different route, but you'll influence them to hopefully go a different route. This is one of those scenarios. The city does not want a lot of electronic signage, or I would think you would not want that. Just because of the distraction standpoint, it has nothing to do with the aesthetic of it. It's just distracting. If you imagine you're driving down Cameron and you imagine all those signs are electronic signs that are changing messages, then you're gonna be looking off to your side a lot more than you're gonna be looking at the road. And so this is more of an influence of if you wanna do it, we're gonna allow it to this certain standard. If you want it to be bigger, you can ask for a variance or you can install a monument sign instead of an electronic monument sign or a monolith sign, however you wanna get your message out.
If you're not distracted, a stoplight is not really big and you see it. But everything else is going on. It tends to blend in and then you have to have stoplights that had lights this big in it to stand out. And we're talking city limits. We're not talking about, well, ETJ and city limits, but.
Yeah, I, um, I wasn't, I need to review that with the attorney. I've taken out the portion that we would be going over signage in the ETJ cuz the legislature has taken away so much of our ability within the ETJ that it would just be really odd to keep enforcing signage in the ETJ. And so I've taken it out for now. It can be added back later, um, if that's something that we need to be doing. But it just seemed like an odd stance at the time from my professional recommendation.
And this week, by the way, this week's an interesting week in the legislature as far as some bills going around.
Yeah, I, I've been getting notified. There's, we may be having a lot of conversations in the future, not to get off track, but, um, I know another, a bills that has favor right now is, um, that they're gonna allow accessory dwelling units by right. Some of the commission, actually Moses Commissioner wasn't here when this conversation happened. Um, what an accessory dwelling unit is, to be brief, is, um, a secondary structure on your property that has a similar aesthetic to a home, but it's not quite a home. And some call it modern law suites where somebody lives in it. And then they just share the property together. But the interesting thing about that bill is they're not only gonna allow it by right, but you can't require more parking and you can't do certain things to bring the property up to standard. It would just be as they can add it to their property as is. And the extra traffic is just gonna be on the street, I guess, cuz they're not addressing it, but conversation for a different day. That, that's stuff that we see all the time.
But I was worried about the ET. We were talking about, you know, the faster you go and.
Yeah, I mean, right now, the ETJ, we've lost a lot of our authority and it just looks like we're gonna keep losing more of it to the, um, the last legislative session where they, um, allowed anybody within the ETJ to disannex from the ETJ. Um, really hindered that really badly to where a lot of cities are suing that bill and they're getting the runaround for that. So I don't wanna speak too much cuz I'm on a mic about it, but, um, that kind of, that, that's changed a lot with the ETJ. And then as you know, we can't annex willingly anymore. It all has to be voluntary. So ETJ has lost a lot of its meaning over the last six years to the point where it's getting to where there may not need to be an ETJ. But back on the signs, um, that's the thought process on the small sign faces. We just don't wanna allow a big sign that's gonna distract a driver for longer. We can add in that we would just allow it to be bigger if that's something that the commission would like to see. We can add the, uh, table that we had in the previous sections, if you're familiar with, that if you set it back, it can be slightly taller, it can be slightly larger, you know? But it would be sitting back farther, so you'd be pulling their attention even farther away from the road at that point is something, an idea you gotta keep in mind.
Did it answer your question?
I think so. I mean, it's.
I, I mean, it's, it's good to have something. It's better to understand why you have it than just.
I mean, there is, you can apply for a variance.
Yeah, this is, this is, I, I want y'all's feedback. And this is the workshop. And so this, you're the advisory board, so you're really, I want you guys to pick this apart. And if you don't understand something, I wanna talk about it. Because it's, I don't wanna go back and amend this in two months after it's approved cuz we missed something. I would like to get it all done. And we're all comfortable with it, so that way we can present it in a nice vote of council. And then they can start working through some of the teeth of it if they have some questions. And so this is the time. If there's things that you wanna see changed, I am perfectly fine with changing it. I just need your direction.
This is one of those ones where you, just how do you find the balance between where the businesses to present themselves in a way that makes sense, but also, and I think we have to be very concerned, you know, the traffic on seventy-nine hopefully will be growing, you know, as, you know, as, as this community grows. You know, I, so I, you know, congestion, distraction is all gonna be an interesting set of conversations. I think that a balance of, so I, I mean, I think this is a pretty decent compromise, but it's, you know, but I think like it's hard to physically imagine. You know, for instance, if I look at that sign, you know, is the electronic with, it would appear to me that that's a pretty reasonable electronic sign. Is that twenty square feet?
It's probably pretty close to twenty square foot.
But so, but so that would probably be fit our, our sign.
This one most likely will, um, if the commissioner wants, you know, we can.
Can't tell the scale like.
I can pull out the green tape again. Some commissioners remember that for the next meeting cuz we'll have one more hash out of this. If you wanna see what twenty square foot looks like.
There you go.
Tape it on the ground. If that's what you wanna see, and then we can talk about it. We did that for sidewalks for commissioners that weren't here. We're talking about how large we want our sidewalks to be. And so we had Mr. Miles and, I don't, did we make Scott walk with them side by side on these sidewalks so that they could see how, how big it would be?
Let me, uh, let me ask, uh, somebody in the trades, what size is that screen we're looking at? It looks like maybe twenty-five square foot right there, five by five or somewhere's close to in there.
I'd say four by five. But see, this is another issue. That right there, if I'm driving by that, because the, you know, let's say that sign we're scrolling or that sign was changing every eight seconds. That's too small for, it's, I'm gonna have to look again just because it's so small. And I can't even see the message that they're trying to, to promote.
Well, that's a minimal, that's a minimal standard on time or maximum standard or, no, that's a minimal standard on time.
Yeah, that's minimum.
Stay like that for fifteen minutes, twenty minutes of it.
Well, and you know, I know some communities, they'll actually specify how big the text has to be. It has to be a minimum, the text that goes on. So there'll be a minimum of, uh.
Font size.
The font size. I don't recall what they would say it would have to be.
And I think we need to be careful about thinking about how much in- information we can put out for someone as they are driving by taking a look at, you know, I'm, as an example. I don't know how many times I've driven by our missing commissioner, uh, Willie's signs, but there is so much information, I still haven't read the whole sign. And I've driven by ten of them every day for the last week. Because you're driving by the Princeton, I, that's, that's where we, I think we have to be very careful. You know, and I think as a business person, we have to be very careful about how much information we can expect to deliver.
You know, and I.
As someone who's driving by.
I will go on to that tangent that, um, with their constitutional right of freedom of speech, when staff gets a sign permit, we cannot review what is, that language is on that sign cuz you cannot base it on what they're putting on their sign. How you do it is, is a determination of if it's commercial or residential sign. That's it. And then you have standards for it. I cannot look at it and make sure that the spelling is correct, that the font size is appropriate enough. If there's too much content for my liking because of that constitutional right. I like the idea, we just can't enforce it. And so it'd be, it would be a business owner. You know, what you can enforce is how they deliver it on electronic signage, for example. If they wanna put, if they wanna put the first page of the Harry Potter book as their sign. Okay, this isn't a good example, but it's a lot of text. You know how much text that is. They can do it every eight seconds and then you just gotta sit there for maybe an hour and wait till you read it all.
But we can restrict like only three lines, um, in.
You can restrict the size of the text. I've seen other communities. I don't think anybody's ever challenged that because I, and I would think you would win that challenge just because you're not saying what that text is. You're just saying it has to be a minimum of this size on an electronic sign. You could potentially do that. I've only seen that done for electronic signs. I've never seen it done for any type of monument or, uh, monolith sign.
What about prelude and suggestive?
I've seen cities that have put in their ordinance that they don't allow that. I don't know how much of a right they actually have to put that in there. You know, that's, that's a big gray area because we talk about freedom of speech, but there's certain things that you can't say at certain times. Everyone uses the example of you can't shout fire in a movie theater. You know, it's kind of one of those things that where it's kind of a given. If you have profanity, the city's most likely gonna come after you. And then if there's a lawsuit after that, then that's a lawsuit that would happen. But I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't recommend putting that in our ordinance just because I'm not sure the legality behind it. That is a big gray area. Yeah. As unfortunate as that sounds, it is, it is, is a gray area.
The big cities where they have enough money, they.
Yeah, a, a lot of bigger cities have that in there. Uh, actually Marble Falls is one of the ones, I, I think it was Marble Falls that had that example of that they will say if it has obscene, uh, obscene language and stuff, then that could be taken down. Uh, I just don't like putting things in ordinances that are gray area because if you put obscene language in there, then what is obscene language to you and what's obscene language to me? And, and then you get into the First Amendment. It's stuff I want to avoid. You know, if that's a bush that we gotta cross at some point, we'll cross it and we'll, and if somebody puts up a sign that has profanity, you know, the city's gonna talk to them about it and then we'll move forward from there. But I just, I wouldn't wanna put that in the ordinance. If commission wants to see it in the ordinance, you outrule me and I'll put it in there.
Well, and again, this is for freestanding signs. Where are we at? What category are we under right now?
Right now, we're on, um, electronic signs. And so we're talking about electronic monuments.
Not gonna, those are, most of those are just your primary signs. For more detailed stuff, you can have canopy signs or.
So you're allowed to have one detached and I think I still allow for five attached signs, which remains as is. That's, that's what we currently allow. And so what that would look like is you could do like one monument sign if that's what you chose. And then you could have a couple of, um, window signs and then you could have a awning sign if you wanted, things of that nature. So you have multiple ways to get multiple messages out. Four attached. I'm sorry, not five. You have one detached and four attached is what we currently allow. So five. You have five total signs.
And when we go to Scott's place, they'll have outside canopies with advertising on it?
The canopy's gotta be attached to the building. Remember, that's part of the.
Oh, I can have a bistro that has a table that has a advertising on a canopy?
That would be an detached sign, yeah. Yeah. You'd want your awning signs to be attached to the building.
But you could have umbrellas.
Most, most of the time I prefer my awnings attached to the building, but yeah, I, I got you.
Yeah, you know, I mean, and that's kinda be, gonna be some gray area. You know, if you have outdoor seating and you put an umbrella out and it has like, um, your logo on it, I mean, that's not really a sign. I mean, you're not necessarily putting out a message. It's just a logo. Um, but if you put out a phone number, then that'd be, had to be a conversation of, oh, does that really fit a sign? Or is that just an item that just happens to have that? You're gonna have gray area in signage. There's always gonna be gray area. No matter how, what, how you do your ordinance.
Well, me, myself and I, we appreciate you doing this research and getting us this far along. At least we have something, not. Not. You, we see how it spins out of control and people don't read and get the permits and, and what apps, and so it's good to have. A blueprint, now, again, uh, council has a right to write whatever they want to amend it as they see fit, so.
Yeah.
At least we have a starting point blueprint.
Yeah, and so it really, after the electronic signs, there's not much of any other changes, um. I had a small change on residential real estate signs, we used to only allow eight feet, um, but. Most communities that we're looking at allow ten feet, so I've changed it to ten feet, that they would allow ten square feet. On number six, if you're with me, it's right above the signs not regulated section. We've just stated that commercial real estate signs shall not be illuminated.
Not be what?
Illuminated. And then um, on seven, we just put a placeholder in there, that temporary window signs or temporary banners are still subject to the regulations in the article. So they're not exempt. As far as your signs not regulated, I haven't changed anything from your other ordinance, I've kept it all the same, we don't regulate governmental signs. Railway signs, utility signs, vehicle signs, signs that aren't visible from the street. Holiday signs, signs on a person. Unused signs.
Are we concerned about signs across the road, highway?
Banners.
Banners, signs about special events, I didn't see it in here, really.
Well, that's actually, this is really gonna be a text dot issue, because you're gonna have to receive text dots approval to put that sign above their highway.
So we don't need to.
Yeah, we wouldn't need to necessarily regulate that. Uh, other signs is unused plaques, uh, traffic control signs, mailboxes, newspaper racks, et cetera. Um, after that, we just get into the permitting section, we really don't need to go over that cuz nothing's really changed from that. I've just specified the process for an applicant, which is just applying for a permit. Having their permit reviewed essentially and then receiving their approval or requesting a variance. I don't think there's any other big changes, let me make sure. Yeah, that, that's, that's really it, it's just section numbers changing cuz I've added a couple. Uh, but there's, there's no other changes, we're still proposing that we don't allow commercial signage to be on any undeveloped lots. Which is a common sign regulation in other communities. Well, yeah, real estate signs we don't regulate, but a commercial sign, advertising a business off premise on an undeveloped lot's not allowed.
Almost to the very end, the variances.
Yeah. So the variance section essentially just says that the city council is empowered to grant variances. If somebody request a variance from any section in the article. If, like, again, if they wanna do some type of different signage that we wouldn't allow, they can request a variance.
I think the variances are, have to meet certain, are supposed to meet certain requirements.
Very, yes, variances, you, for some of those that were here during the, the um. Very exciting workshops that we had on the Texas Local Government Code, there is list of items that require variance approval. The key one that I always point out cuz it's the one that everybody never meets and it's not a self-created hardship. You cannot self-create a hardship. Which what that means is if you're purposely ignoring the code, as in you don't have a sign. And you wanna do a two hundred square foot sign. Instead of what are allowed square footages of like seventy or whatever, it depends the type of sign you're doing, but we'll just say seventy. That's, they're self-creating that hundred and thirty square foot of non-conformance. So they should not receive a variance, they could, but they just should not.
Self-created.
Yeah. Use the example of the, of the signs installed above the roof lines, that's a self-created hardship. They, they received approval, but they should not.
Now, under non-compliance, I don't know if everybody went to this council meeting, but. The fine or for not filing for a permit first is double.
Double the permit fee.
Fee, right?
Yeah, double the permit fee, that's for any permit throughout the city, um, if you.
Part of the reason the variance, I think, was approved was because of the fact that there was anticipation that the ordinance was planned to be changed.
Was what?
Would that the ordinance, these changes were planned would allow it to be.
Under this, under this, with the two foot and all that, they would.
Yeah, like when they were applying, there was a different, I mean, the current ordinance was in place, but the anticipation of. Amending that to reflect what council would like to see through their voting.
Except that maybe the ordinance got changed in anticipation of the behavior of the property owner.
Yeah.
We have to be careful.
Yeah, and so those are, those are the main keys, um, like I said, most of those pages have not changed, you can review them if you want. But that is your current sign ordinance, I haven't changed any of that, of what we exempt. And the various procedure.
Go ahead, let's go ahead, go back to section O under maintenance and removal, make sure we didn't miss anything there.
Okay.
What page?
Um, it's three from the back.
Yeah, it's.
Okay.
O, maintenance and removal.
From the back, on the left-hand lower side will be section O, maintenance and removal. Let me count if that's three or four. Yeah, about the third page back where it says on the lower left-hand side, it'll say maintenance and removal.
Yeah, so this is the section that we discussed earlier, um, essentially this is the process that has to happen. If somebody has a sign that is in dish repair or needs to be removed due to the code.
Well.
That there's an, essentially saying that there's an inspection that would occur from your building official or a designee. And then if the building official finds that the sign is.
That's what I was gonna question right there, one of the questions I had, the verbiage is building official. And we wanna be broad on that so we don't say code enforcement or, or building codes or.
Yeah, I mean, uh, what you'll see in a lot of ordinances is they'll say a title sometimes and then they'll say or. Their designee, and that's a catch-all cuz anybody can be their designee that's a hired staff member.
And for us in Rockdale, that's close enough, right? We're good with building official.
Yeah, building official, really, we operate a, a building official that's third party. And so we can just add the verbiage if you wanna see it of his or her designee as well. And then that could be myself, or it could be Justin Williams who also helps me do code enforcement. Uh, but you'll see that in a lot.
Huh?
I like that idea, or designee.
Okay.
Because, the only reason I do that, if somebody wanna be hard-nosed, they say you don't have a building official, but.
Yeah, well, we do, we just hire him out, he doesn't have an office here permanently. And then after that, so the inspection can, will add that verbiage of it'll be his designee or her designee as well. And then the removal process, um, if they find that it's unsafe or insecure or is a minister public or et cetera. Uh, they'll get a notice essentially to remove it. And then it also stipulates that the building official may cause any sign, which is in immediate peril to be, to persons or property be removed. Without notice. And then any sign located in public right of way may be immediately removed by anyone without notice to the owner. Any questions on that, that, that catches your, um, we were talking about businesses moving out, there's actually another section that talks about that, that they have sixty days. But that all, this will catch your existing businesses that may just not care about their sign, they may be doing so well that they don't need the sign anymore, so they just let it go off and disrepair and. There is actually a process for them to repair that.
So from here, your plans for this? Are we gonna reread it again, or we, or?
Uh, we, we have a normal.
Enough to send it to?
No, we have a normal, so I'll make that one change, I'll let you sleep on it one more night cuz we're gonna meet one more time before council anyways. And you'll have one more stab at this and then we're sending it to council. With your recommendations attached of how you like, so you have more time with this if you'd like, if. If there are sections that you have concerns about, I know we talked about it a lot today. And there may be, there may be ideas that come to mind or, or size requirements that may need to change, depe- depends.
So is there anything in here about the look of the sign, I mean, you don't exactly want a pole sign or, or whatever that. Monument sign, that somebody with a paintbrush just gets out and, you know, I mean, you want it to be professionally done.
Yeah, I mean, we have a construction standard, I'll, I'll briefly read it to you. Um, just because, just to make sure that you're comfortable with it, cuz it has a, a catch-all option, which is intentional to do that. Just in case somebody comes in with material that's different, that would work, it could be approved without having to go for a variance. So I'll use monument signs as an example, for the design, it's a minimum of forty percent solid masonry. Which would be stone brick and or stucco to match the building, and then there's a catch-all that says signs proposing to use equivalent materials. Then required above consistent with the building architecture or overall sign design may be approved by the city manager or their designee. And that's with all of your signs, they, they all have standards in place. I'll have to put that catch-all in for the electronic monument signs to refer back to this section, so that will have that catch-all as well.
Didn't mean to wake you up, boy, uh, any question, any, any questions on this?
No.
Joan.
Right now.
Bob, anything to help you digest this, he said, take this home and digest.
I'm pretty comfortable with what's, what's getting, became together. Um, I was thinking a little bit about what Joan said, um, did we wanna make any recommendation to change the permitting process for refacing signs? Or making it a little bit easier on businesses if like, the substance and the text of a sign, whether it be pole, monument, otherwise. Um, if they can just bypass the permitting process, if everything's staying the same, that way we have a little bit better likelihood of somebody just going ahead and. Getting something um, professionally done or.
Only remark to that, that you need to keep in mind, is when somebody comes to staff for a permit, whether they need one or not. If you require a permit traditionally, they'll come in office and they'll show you their sign, to that way we have an idea of how big the sign's gonna be. Because we know what's existing on site, rather than if we don't require a permit, there's not necessarily gonna be an avenue where I can tell them what they need to do.
But it's the same size that's already been approved.
You're assuming it's gonna be, but if they install a bigger sign that's against code and I have to come after them cuz it's not conforming. They never got that notice cuz there was never a permit required.
There's costs involved.
Gotcha. That, that's the thing you gotta keep in mind, we're assuming the best and I wanna change your mindset to assume the worst.
Yeah, cuz that, yeah.
Because that's what we're gonna deal with.
They're not all like you, Joe.
What, what is, what is the verbiage for? Ugly or not, if, it deteriorated, do, do we have, is that under your permitting, that's in your area, the determine? The sign needs to be refreshed or is non-performing or?
It should be defined, that terminology that I read in that section, I'll verify to see if it is defined, but it should be. It, usually they'll define it as like dilapidated or, or some type of simi- similar terminology. That is, uh, gives an idea for staff to look at, I mean, it's not gonna be super specific as in saying like. The amount of tears within a sign or the amount of letters missing qualifies it as a public nuisance slash non-conforming sign.
And unless it's endangering, falling or something like.
That is completely separate, if it's, like I read in that section, if it's a immediate danger to the public as it's, it's hanging on by one screw. And it's a twenty square foot sign that's gonna fall from eight foot in the air, I mean, we can immediately remediate that situation without giving notice.
The, the, the reason I ask is after one of those really big, I'll call it a tornado came through. We had some signs that were deformed and.
Yeah.
And all that and. They're not performing, they're not up to standard, but do we have a standard, I guess? So if I called in and said, hey, this sign is, is damaged in the wind, you will go look at it or, or?
Code enforcement.
Trying to say, do we have any teeth in this?
Yes, there's teeth in it, there is, cuz the sign's required to be in good repair.
Okay.
Here regarding this, I'm positive the disrepair.
That's right, yeah, I mean, there'll be scenarios, like if you have a massive hailstorm, you'll be polite to your businesses that have holes in their signs and. Give them some time, you won't come after them, but if it's just.
Well, no, I, yeah, most of the businesses that are concerned about their advertising will go out and do, do repairs, if they're just barely hanging on, it may not be a priority. So I, I get that, I.
Yeah, so there, there's currently teeth, and, and I haven't proposed to change the teeth that's currently there, uh. You know, I'll tell you, staff operates and we go out probably like once a quarter usually and collect sign, illegal signage within right-of-way's. And send notices that way, um, as far as dis-repaired signs, that's something that we need to get involved in more often. As far as if a business moves, when they, cuz they're required to register as a vacant commercial structure, so we can just hit them at the same time for. You also need to remove your sign cuz you're not operating anymore.
Now, are they required to move their pole sign?
Not the whole pole sign, but they'd have to remove the face of the sign.
All right, that was individual questions, one more time, any questions for Ben regarding this workshop? If no more questions, it's two fifty-five, I hereby adjourn the planning and zoning commission.